All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the order of the Commissioners' meeting for Tuesday, May 14, 2024 at now 1:00 p.m. I would ask that you please join me in a moment of silent reflection. If you'd please join me to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and its sovereign public, which stands for the nation under God and invisible of liberty and justice.
Thank you. Executive session announcement. Generally, she knows what she's doing, but every once in a while.
Okay, I fixed it. I'm sorry, everybody. I'm sorry. That was a long moment. There were no executive sessions since our last Board of Commissioners meeting.
Okay, I'll move to approve the Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for 4:25 and 5:07.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Public comment. Yes, Kay, everyone's looking at you.
And I still remain interested in knowing if you have any new additions to that opioid spending that you have to report in this.
Did we schedule our next open discussion?
Are you doing that on Thursday when I'm not here? Not this week. I don't think we're doing it this week. Right, next week, next week. Sorry, next week when I'm not here.
So hopefully, next week, we'll have an open discussion regarding that. Maybe I'll answer some of your questions at that time. Any other public comment? Hearing none. Commissioners' comment?
I would just share that on this past Saturday, there was one of the YMCA races in their Healthy Living Series, started at the diamond and went past the courthouse. I participated and had the pleasure of being cheered on by some of our custodial staff as I came back around the corner. And their next race is July 4th in downtown Altoona, and it is a much larger race with about 1,000 participants every year. And I just encourage anyone in the community who's interested in getting out there, doing something healthy, to check out their race series.
I would like to just follow up with a couple of things. One, it's Police Week. So as a county, the Board of Commissioners, we appreciate everything that the police officers do for us continually, so we would like to recognize them. And I'd also like to recognize Devin Saylor. He's here, red up Altoona. Their last was Saturday, was it not?
Yes.
How many participants did you have?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven participants. So appreciate what you do. We appreciate what you do, so thank you. That was a good event. I'd like to read a proclamation in Armed Forces Day. Armed Forces Day, May 18, 2024. Whereas in February 1950, President Truman established a single holiday to recognize and honor individuals who defend our nation both at home and abroad. And whereas, the first Armed Forces Day celebrated on May 20, 1950, marked the first combined demonstration by America's defense team of its progress under the National Security Act that unified forces of our land, sea, and air defense. And whereas, 11 years later, on March 18, 1961, President John F. Kennedy signed a Presidential Proclamation 3399 officially declaring Armed Forces Day a national holiday on every third Saturday in May. And whereas, on Armed Forces Day, we honor all the members of the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, Space Force, Coast Guard, and National Guard and Reserve Forces. And whereas, the County of Blair recognizes and honors over 25 current employees who have served or who are still serving in the branch of the Armed Forces. And now, therefore, we, the Blair County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 18, 2024 Armed Forces Day and encourage all citizens to display the flag of the United States at their homes, businesses, on Armed Forces Day, and to learn more about the military service by attending and participating in local observances of the day, duly adopted by the Commissioners of the County of Blair, Pennsylvania, this 14th day of May 2024. I put that into a form of a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I was just going to let you know. Commissioner Webster has joined us by phone.
All right, welcome. If you could please.
Thank you.
Consent agenda.
Thank you. Today's consent agenda is Resolution Number 229. It's the payment of three warrant lists as outlined in your agenda in Item A, and the ratification of nine warrant lists as outlined in Item B. It's a budget transfer in Item C. It's appointing, or the reappointments of Dawn Delogier, Scott Durbin, and Susan Everhart to the County of Blair Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board for the period of 5/1/24 through 4/30/26. It's resignations, employments, and the status changes listed on your agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll go ahead and second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I am an aye with abstentions to payments to Thomas and Shandra Gendora in the amount of $1,500, abstentions to payment to Julia Burke for elections in the amount of $156.61, and a payment to the Borough of Holliesburg in the amount of $4,957.77.
Okay. Staff reports and special business. Inter-Municipal Relations Committee, IRC.
Brock Bryan.
Brock Bryan.
Brock Bryan, I am the executive director of the IRC. We're in charge of recycling here in Blair County. Basically, what we're asking for, for the first item, is the online submission of a 904 grant for county year 2022. Essentially, we submit our grant online. The 904 grant covers half of my salary and benefits. Basically, I have a dual role as the county recycling coordinator, and that is submitting all the recycling information, data that get to the state each year, as well as applying any grants in favor of the IRC. So the first item is to accept the award for $31,227.49, which has already been paid to you as the county, and then, you know, gets transferred over to the IRC.
Okay. Any comments or questions of Brock? Okay. Hearing none. I'll make a motion to approve the submission of the performance grant. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then, the second item is just to actually submit the grant. We assume the estimated total has not been approved by DEP at this time yet, but it should be roughly around $35,898.
Okay, any questions or comment of Brock? All right, again, I'll make the motion to submit the online application. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Brock.
Thank you.
Prison. Warden Tate and Judy Rosser.
So we're requesting approval of an MOU between the County of Blair, Prime Care Medical, Impairment Healthcare, to provide method of medication for opioid use disorders, patients incarcerated in Blair County prison, to be paid with opioid settlement funds.
Any comments or questions of either Warden Tate or Judy Rosser?
We do have some financial grant through PCCD through September. We will be asking for an extension on that grant because we had some delays in getting started, and there's some money still sitting there. Our hope is that they will let us at least extend with a no-cost extension, meaning that we get time, but not ask for more money. We just utilize the money that's left. So we will be asking for that request. But we do have some funds to reimburse the methadone care until then.
Didn't you say something about VIVITROL?
Yes, actually, and I think I made Warden Tate aware of this, but through the PCCD, we are expecting also some reimbursement for our VIVITROL program in the near future. So we don't know amounts yet, but that was announced to a committee that I'm on.
Any other comments or questions?
So Judy, your funding stream will be first, and then, once that funding stream is exhausted, expires, whichever comes first, then the request is then to kick over to opioid settlement funds, which is a allowable use. The interesting part about this is we don't have an idea of how much that's going to be, and we've talked about this with a couple of the opioid settlement items that have come before the board. There's not really a dollar amount. I can't sit here and say we need to encumber this amount of funds for that. So I just want to make sure that that's your understanding of also how this is going to kind of play out in the budget. So that's obviously your decision.
This does not include any induction except for, pardon, the methadone care, which we currently do anyway. This does not include any induction at all. So the main part of the amendment for prison is probably for the payment, the county, and then the security of how or where we're getting these costs.
If we could all only determine who's coming in and how many and who.
And when.
I would have gray hair, you might have.
I'd be sitting on a, what? Right to the hairdresser. That was hard. Okay, before this gets off the rails, any other comments or questions of either Warden Tate or Judy Rosser? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the County of Blair and Prime Care for methadone medication. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Children, Youth, and Families, Mindy.
Hello? Hello?
We hear you. Okay, Mindy.
Good to go?
Yes.
All right, we're requesting approval of the fiscal year 2425 Agreement for Payment of Legal Services between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, and Ashley Passarello, attorney of Graybill Law Offices, for period of July 1, 24 through June 30, 25, at the rate of 85 an hour.
Any comments or questions of Mindy? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for payment of legal services from CYF2 Ashley Passarello Esquire.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Next, we're requesting approval of the fiscal year 2425 Agreement of Payment of Legal Services as counsel for minor children or court-appointed additional counsel for minor child between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, and Brian Graybill, Esquire, attorney of Graybill Law Offices, for the same period, July 1, 24 through June 30, 25, at the rate of 85 an hour.
Any comments or questions of Mindy?
Commissioners, I apologize. I will make sure that item number one for Ashley Passarello reads the same in the resolution as item number two. They are both minor child, court-appointed additional counsel for minor child agreements, and I didn't specify that in item number one, so it doesn't change anything. The resolution will read correctly, but I forgot to say that. Thanks, Mindy.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I was going to ask if one was a guardian ad litem or a parent representative as opposed to a guardian for the child.
Yeah.
So thank you for clarifying.
Yep, I tried to catch that in the agenda, but I didn't get that one first one. I did the second one, so yeah, Amy, they're the same agreement, just with different attorneys at the same law firm.
Okay, thank you.
Hearing no further comments or questions, I'll make a motion to approve payment of legal services to Attorney Graybill Law Offices for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Hello? Aye.
We're also requesting approval of the fiscal year 2425 Purchase of Service Agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, and Alternative Living Solutions for the period of July 1, 2024, that should say, through June 30, 2025, and the cost will vary on that depending on the number of children in care and the level of care required. This is our independent living program.
And you said the July date was July?
July 1, 2024 through June 30, 25. It's our 2425 contract.
Any comments or questions of Mindy regarding that?
Just for informational purposes, independent living is 14 and up, I think.
I thought it was 18 through 21. They might, I don't think they have a program for 14. I can double-check on that, though.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the Service Agreement HIPAA Business Associate with Alternate Living Solutions for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then, we're requesting approval of fiscal year 2425 Purchase of Service Agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, and Blair Family Solutions. That's for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, also with the cost varying depending on level of care and number of kids in care.
I'd like to see that at zero someday.
Maybe.
Any comments or questions of Mindy?
I Googled for independent living, and it looks like they can serve youth under 16 if OCYF approves it.
Okay.
So just for clarification, because I don't know where I got 14 from.
Okay.
So on the same page with that one, sorry.
The rates did not change for Blair Family Solutions, so I don't know if you noticed that, but that's good.
Any other comments or questions of Mindy? I'll make a motion to approve the Purchase Service Agreement HIPAA Business Associate with Blair Family Solutions for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and last, we are requesting approval of the fiscal year 2425 Agreement for Purchase Under Bidding Threshold between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, and Retino Kill North America, doing business as Retino Kill Steratech, doing business as Ehrlich, which is our pest control company.
Any comments or questions? I'll make a motion to approve, and I am not reading and butchering those names, so.
I know.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Social services. We're getting double-teamed a lot today.
We have a guest with me, Scott Durbin. He's a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. So we're here to request the approval to establish the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Code Compliance Repair Assistance Program, and that's a new program. The advisory board is requesting approval of an owner-occupied code compliance repair assistance program to utilize the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Its intent is to provide up to $5,000 limit per household for low-to-moderate-income, owner-occupied households to assist with minor repairs to a homeowner who has been issued a code violation or citation letter from the city or municipality. Blair County has a high, older, very high older housing stock and low-to-moderate-income elderly households that cannot afford basic repairs that are code violations. The Code Compliance Repair Assistance Program would hopefully prevent the homeowner from the magisterial code compliance process, which can result in additional fines and fees to the homeowner. The homeowner would be responsible to complete the application and obtain at least two qualified contractor bids to be included in the application.
It's been a couple of years on the drawing board. We've been working on this program, and we see the need. $50,000 is a fair amount of money, but the objective of the Affordable Trust Fund is to get the trust fund money out in the streets, and typically, we've always thought of like bricks and sticks. So we come up with this program, we have people that are putting a cap of $5,000 per application. It's a simple application, three or four pages, the staff can help out, the homeowner's going to have to get the bids, our committee will review it, and then from there, we're moving on through the process. So something that someone that that's in need, they have a spouting issue, it might be an electrical panel, something in that, and that's up to $5,000, so that doesn't mean they have to spend $5,000. So, you know, the more that's available, that they don't use is more for other people that's available. So myself and some other people on the committee, as well as Rebecca's here from the City of Altoona, from the Codes Department, Dave Ellis, Councilman of the City of Altoona, and letters of support from Holliesburg, Logan Township, this is a county fund, all spun off the monies that is generated from Act 137. So with talking with everyone and figuring it out, Melissa has done a fantastic job of, I've been the woodpecker on the fence post here, just pecking away, saying, all right, what's it going to take? What's it going to take? And we're finally there, and we appreciate your cooperation.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just so I clear, this is the first, or it sounds like we're doing the first and the second. Can we do one at a time?
Yes.
So we've already done the first one, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so on the first one, we're requesting approval to establish Affordable Housing Trust Fund Code Compliance Repair Assistance Program. I'm making a motion to approve that. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, can I have a second?
I have a question.
Whoops. Go ahead, Amy.
My only question is, do the contractors just have to be registered with the state in order to be able to be valid for submitting bids?
Yes, they would have to have a registration license, the license that would be required upon applying for a building permit. So that, you know, the homeowner would have to list who's going to do the work, what their license number is, and the city does require proof of insurance and et cetera, you know, with the, then the Codes Department will be following up with, depending on what works done, if it's a one, after it's completed, you know, it's a minor repair, if it's something structural, may require some initial drawings or some type of a sketch of an idea, scope of work, or a cross sheet of exactly what's going on. Yeah, they would have to be registered.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, I made a motion to approve the establishment of Affordable Housing Trust Fund Code Compliance Repair. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
In the second one, you've already went, you explained, correct?
Well, I'll just go formally through, and it says, we're requesting an allocation from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for repair program, code-compliant repair program, in total amount of $50,000.
Any comments or questions regarding trust fund compliance and a $50,000? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the allocation of Affordable Housing Trust Fund Compliance Repair Assistance Program in the total amount of $50,000. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Are you the third?
Trina.
Oh, Trina. And you announced everybody here except for the mayor, like Mayor Matt Pacifico is here, so we have to recognize the mayor. I'm sorry, Trina, go ahead.
That's okay. I'm hoping the code compliance actually reduces my housing rehab requests, so I'm all for it, too. We're requesting today approval to submit our final closeout documents to DCED to close out the federal fiscal year 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program, our contract number 73790, in the total amount of $885,208.
Any comments or questions?
Know if you wanted any information on the projects or didn't?
Well, I just, one question I have is like, we're requesting approval for the closeout to 2019, and it's 2020.
Yes, federal fiscal year 2019, yes.
So you can kind of educate me on that one.
So we do receive an annual allocation each year. On behalf of the county, receives a CDBG contract on behalf of currently 17 non-entitlement communities. Those are the smaller boroughs and townships of the county, and then we have five entitlement municipalities. The Holliesburg Borough, Tyrone Borough, Anis Township, Blair Township, and Frankstown Township. Greenfield, you'll see me kind of, before we close all these out, in 2019, Greenfield Township was actually an entitlement in 2019, so in 2022, it actually got picked up into our non-entitlement, so that's why sometimes I'm going to say 16 and 17. But I'll just give you, so when we get them, we actually get one contract, but we get six or seven allocations within that contract. So in 2019, the county received or spent $127,049.81 in admin. That is not just my salary and benefits, but that also is some delivery costs and those things to actually deliver the projects. $122,213.19 was spent on water and sewer projects. That was a multi-year funded project in Frankstown Township. It actually extended the sewer line, it was as a result of a malfunctioning sewer, septic sewer, which we do those, too. We have multiple of those. So the actual sewer line, main line, was across the street. We brought it out, boarded under the street, and actually picked up two additional houses, which sets Frankstown up to take the sewer line further up Old Frankstown Road. So it was a win-win for everybody. It was a multi-year funded project, so it was just, wasn't just 19 funds, it actually picked up about four or five years' worth of CDBG funds. There was $106,648 that were spent on street improvements in Anis Township. With the COVID period in there, we were actually able to extend a contract, and actually, that multi-year funded project was actually $455,000. It was six years of CDBG funds, and it actually was street drainage improvements in the North Fourth Street area, down around the baseball field in Anis Township. It actually put in sidewalks, curbing, and instead of dumping the street water right into the creek, we actually were able to put in some MS4 points for Anis Township, and we put in a swell. So just want to begin the importance of CDBG. The remaining funds, $529,297, we completed housing rehab. We did 10 units. There was four in the County of Blair, one in Newry, one in Freedom, one in Dunkinsville, one in Williamsburg Borough, one in Holliesburg Borough, one in Blair Township, two in Tyrone Borough, and two in Greenfield Township for 10 housing rehab projects.
It's kept you busy.
Yes.
For good things.
We're very busy, yes.
Good things. Any comments or questions for Trina? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve and close out the FY 2019 Community Development Block Grant in a total amount of $885,280.
Okay.
And I got a second. Do I have?
And just to, so you haven't even seen 23. We haven't even got 23 contracts yet, so that should be any day.
I'm anxious.
So I'll come back.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Trina. HR, looks like we have Brian up. You can smile, Brian, or not.
Hi, I am here requesting approval to authorize Pennsylvania County's Health Insurance Purchasing Cooperative to transfer $115,913.20 from our current P-chip reserve balance to cover the 2023 funding shortfall.
Any comments or questions of Brian?
The program is doing what it's supposed to with our reserve balance, and then we have a bad year, we use a little bit of our reserves, we build it back up again, so. No, it's been a really helpful project, or helpful for the taxpayers to have that reserve there.
No, it's been a really helpful project, or helpful for the taxpayers to have that reserve there, so.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the funds to the reserve balance to cover the 2023 shortfall. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And Nicole?
Yes, we have a request for a reimbursement agreement, ECMS Agreement L00823. This is between the County of Blair, Keller Engineers, and PennDOT for the engineering services on the Old Mill Run Bridge Number 33. That does include preliminary design, final design, service during the construction, and construction inspection, and the maximum agreement cost of $562,665.92.
Any comments or questions of Nicole, the old mill bridge? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between Keller's Engineering Services and Old Mill Bridge Number 33. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any old business? I guess we're all caught up. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Next Board of Commissioner meeting will be held Thursday, May 16th at 1:00 p.m. Thank you.